But with that, I'll just give a little framework of how public comments go. Again, we welcome them. If you're attending the meeting virtually, public comment, please raise your hand. And Maria will help us identify you and will bring you into the meeting. If you're attending in person, if you'd like to speak, please sign in so we know that you'd like to speak and approach the podium. When you do so, we'll ask that you identify yourself as well as those remotely by name, address, you know, your interest or any community member, if you have students in the district, just so we understand your perspective and context that much more. And when the board calls your name, please approach so we can make sure everybody has a chance orderly. And each person has three minutes to present on your thoughts. We do provide for a timer that just helps keep things moving along. And when it goes off, I please ask that you wrap up your comments shortly after that. And please direct your statements to the board only. We appreciate that very much. To ensure that everybody has an opportunity to speak and with respect of due process and individual rights, the district maintains a formal process for submitting any complaints about an individual. This is not the venue for that. If you have any concerns, by all means, reach out. We will provide that process and make sure that you're heard in that regard as well. And then you certainly don't want to stifle anybody's thoughts or what you wish to speak about. However, we do need to be aware that if your statements do violate the rights of others, we may have to deter that conversation. If you think that there is a concern about that, we suggest that you go ahead and get any counsel you might need before presenting that conversation. And then lastly, we just ask that speakers express themselves in a civil manner and with respect for others in all regards. And we really appreciate you attending remotely, in person. Thank you for being here. So with that, we do have public comments that are our next agenda item. Maria, do you see anybody? Take a look. Thank you so much. And again, this is on agenda business. I got it, Maria. Okay, it looks like we have topics that are not necessarily on agenda items. So consequently, we will hear comments in regards to those items after we work through our other agenda items. All right, now we're on to our superintendent's report.
Yeah, thank you. Just have a couple of updates. One is the final bond forum is October 26th, and that's 9:00 AM, and 5:00 PM virtually and 6:00 PM in person. This is our 13th and 14th and 15th session since May to communicate with the public about our upcoming bond program. And a reminder, we're at this point where we encourage you to go to polls and vote Tuesday over the second. The polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And vote at your usual polling place for state and national elections.
Where is the in-person one going to be?
The in-person?
Our bond for?
Right, right here.
Right here, okay, right here.
Right here.
Yeah, but 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM.
Just an update a little bit on COVID. On the COVID front, we have seen an increase in cases, just with primarily at the high school. We're continuing to work with families versus identifying close contacts and having assistance from Oakland County Health Department as well. So our total warranty numbers have gone up. It's one of our higher totals we've had this school year. And also, on a positive note, it looks like we're in line with the grant program to have assistance with the nursing in this school year. We had it last year, but the grant dissolved through Oakland Schools. And this year, it's emerged again, and so we will likely have a school nurse for this year to assist us with COVID and identifying close contacts and potentially also a voluntary program to keep kids in school.
The same nurse or a new nurse?
We don't know who will get assigned to us. So it's going to be Oakland Schools has 10 nurses that they're going to distribute across the county. And so at this point, we are going to probably have one stationed here. We also have another opportunity under the 31-0 grants to have potentially even another nurse, part-time to full-time, that's funded by the state of Michigan. And so with that 31-0 grant, we could have a nurse through that program that would be for COVID and non-COVID related items, or the one coming from Oakland Schools is strictly for COVID activities in the district.
Simply have any questions for that? Thank you very much. And I intend to, thank you, I was just remembering, I appreciate it. I intended to add to our agenda under the closed session item, which is number 10 for those who follow along. Not only will we be discussing negotiations, but also reviewing an internal client privilege matter. So please take note of that. And next on our item on our agenda is item six, which is approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion? Look at the board of education, would it send agenda as support? Any discussion on this matter? Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes, yes. Ayan Salter, yes. Hermanus M. Colada, yes. Valerie Stokraski, yes. Jeff Zofke, please tell them. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Now we're on to information and discussion items, item seven. First off is the education report by Carly Stone.
Thank you. I'm going to, Diane, can I take your education report for this item? I'm going to see her on the PowerPoint.
So we've got this big intent to update the board on the district mental health position we're at now and our multi-tiered systems of supports that we have incorporated. So let me get the PowerPoint. So this year, we were granted a 31-N grant, and that helped us to increase our mental health staff in our elementary school. And so as of last year, we had two psychologists, one elementary and preschool social worker, two high school social workers, and four high school middle school counselors. This year, because of the increase, we have two school psychologists, three school social workers and counselors, two high school middle school social workers and four high school middle school counselors. And then we are working on the additional of a preschool social worker or counselor. This is to help support our increased mental health needs of our students. The next slide talks about primarily prior to this year, they supported the most behaviorally chanted students, developed data collection templates for us to be able to identify the activities and what was happening before, the antecedents and behavior, and then what happened after those behaviors. Review and summarize data, develop behavior intervention plans, develop staff intervention plans, how we're going to react to some of the students and their behaviors, support to the outside agencies that we grow with parents, and interaction with outside agencies and follow up with the mental health survey results. So last year, we did a mental health survey, and our staff put together enormous spreadsheets and identified those students that we're going to work with and, you know, reach out to both online and in person. And we will be doing that again this year and doing a universal mental health survey again with our students. We're looking at different ones, whether they actually like our older students to actually do their own, you know, give us their own input, or the course they're teaching us input. Now, our primary activities, of course, we're going to continue what we did last year with the behavioral supports for students, the data collection, behavior intervention plans, staff intervention plans, continue to support the outside agencies. But our additional ones, we're next slide, we want to be more proactive. And so we're working on more, increase our small group counseling in our elementary schools. We did some of that last year, but a lot of that was not even done as much. We are going to be doing actual lessons in our elementary schools in their classrooms. There's schedules going on. Those classroom schedule presentations will include some things like bullying help prevention that's already started, that's both elementary schools, our schedule of friendship and kindness groups, and discussions and presentations to our children on that. And then some of the key characteristics, which is our school-wide behavior support program. We're also scheduling like mini building assemblies, so, you know, regarding those lessons. So we don't want to have all of this there, but we might have, you know, like K1, 2, and then 3, 4, 5, to do some kind of presentations that are the school-wide program. And then what's helped is that we have more time and supports for our challenging students, and we're giving back to staff and giving back to those parents too. Some of the improvements that we've seen, we have fewer threat assessments or risk assessments that are occurring. We have more support for our most challenging students. Since the pandemic, student challenging behaviors have increased. We've seen that through preschool, all through high school, and students online present a very increased and a unique challenge for our staff to support. So we've been working with all of our online students last year and this year. We're working in a prevention mode. We want to teach children skills that they need as opposed to reactive activities. So we teach children to use their words and actions and identify their feelings with words and pictures and whatever it takes for some of our younger students. So we want to increase that prevention. And then additional help staff helps the district to have recommended numbers of mental health staff when we need to put risk assessments or crisis assessments. Typically, we'd like to have two. When we had less staff, we weren't always able to do that. I gave an example today because I interviewed a preschool person today for our social work. And I said, you know, yesterday, one day last week, we had no mental health staff, they were out ill in one day, and they had a risk assessment, and brought some from high school, I brought some from the elementary, and we brought the other, and they were there to support each other. And our team is a wonderful mental health team, very supportive when something goes on, text messages go out, they're answering all day long, all week long. And so they're great people. The other system that sort of ties into this because multi-tiered system of supports is both behavioral and academic. And so here's some history. Prior to meeting, we had a response intervention primarily in the elementaries, mostly in reading and some behavioral interventions and supports. And my colleague, Richard Billmeyer, was sort of cutting edge in that and one of the principals of the elementaries worked on that a lot. And so they had a system in place. It was probably RTI response intervention. It sort of morphed into multi-tiered system support, which is both behavioral and academic. And so when I just bought on, in the spring of the year 2011, '12, we developed and had, I don't know, maybe 16 meetings of people from all aspects, general ed, special ed, mental health principals, and we developed a MTSF committee. We developed the system, the idea of having research-based practices for our district-wide system, focus on academic and behavioral, so both, collecting data on both those things and intervention that would support those. We designed a process to support continuity between the building and the levels and developed some forms that would make it easier for people to collect the data and to, you know, request the help through the system and the procedure. The forms were varied so people could, you know, pick the ones that worked for them. And that helped to identify and document with fidelity for intervention that was going on. And so we were working on that, and it was going along, but then, you know, as systems changed and staff changes, we saw that it was sort of coming to the wayside, and we needed to be less more inconsistent. The communication from one level to the next was not as good. And so last year, that's the next slide, 2020, we had a pilot program over at Oakland, and a staff person took on that, put all the forms electronically, okay? Which is not out in paper, we had paper files that we're passing on, now they're electronic. We sort of, the process was reformalized. We introduced professional development to staff regarding best practice for interventions, both academically and behaviorally, and increased the use of interventions with fidelity. What it meant to actually have an intervention and document that innovation for more than a week or two. You have to do it for anywhere from six to eight weeks to identify an intervention. So MTS for the future. Now this year, we have identified MTS as coordinators in each building. They're going to be working with the building principals, myself, the reading specialists, social workers, psychologists, counselors, specialist folks, and the curriculum directors. We'll work as a team to support our students, both behaviorally and academically. And they were, they're sort of going to coordinate the reading data, keep the information together for everybody, and again, help us with that transition from fifth grade to sixth grade, from preschool to elementary, from high school, from elementary to middle school to high school. We don't want kids to be lost in the shuffle room. Our outcomes is that we're going to support more students and have more interventions with students with both mental health concerns, more research-based interventions with students with reading delays, increase in math interventions for students K-12, and additional opportunities for students with type of eligibility of dropping out. And one of the, one of the first programs is the high school, increase the high school thing program initiated this year to help with the possible drop out.
Any questions? I just want to comment that since our last meeting, I received three calls specifically about the efforts and initiatives undertaken at our district. Two calls were very similar, related to different buildings, but it had to do with what you just suggested, and compliments from families for addressing the transition from their family, I'll say their whole family as it needed, if it needed, from one school building to the next. They had a change this year in each instance, again, different building transitions. So they didn't have the exact same teams, but in both instances, suffice to say, very complimentary, very happy. And they, one said they felt at ease when they thought they had a lot of angst. They now felt at ease with the transition and how it went. So I want to pass that along. And then another very, very kind family reached out to give kudos and thank yous and appreciation for a person in their family who was having more urgent need and the way the team worked together. They heard from other buildings, it was clearly a team effort, and that was their, the premise for their praise was that it was a team effort, and they really appreciated it. So it was the last meeting, and I think from three people. And so thank you for the efforts and everyone that has been along.
They really do, I mean, everyone works with the team. They want to, the kids need to hear from everyone.
Sure.
I think that's the great, I'm so glad that you mentioned that because in listening to all of the work that's gone into this, my next question was, so what's done in the experience, right? Do we have any data collection plans for the experience of both parents and students going through, if they think, I think that's valuable?
So that's one of the additional duties of the MTS as coordinator, is they will be the collection data persons in each building to support, you know, how's it going, what kind of supports were given, and how did those supports, you know, come to fruition?
And so what does that look like? Does that look like surveys? Does that look like focus groups? How does that, how does that data collection happen?
So in the area of reading and math, we're going to see that did the interventions X, Y, and Z help with student A to increase their reading skills or their math skills. So those are going to be test scores and things. The mental health piece will be looking at, you know, overall numbers of students that were either referred out or, you know, given supports within the building. The hope was decrease in referrals to the office, you know, decrease conflict between students and between students who are having issues and that we can support them. So we, they collect data, we have a spreadsheet with all of that data going there.
So did I add to her? Add to her, sorry, sorry. Add to her from saying, we're doing data collection with the mental health piece, but are we doing a well-rounded data collection? Because the mental health piece to me doesn't just concern the student in the school, any concerns with the parent, the siblings, the teachers, like the whole, the whole family dynamic? So are we, are we doing any efforts to collect factual and reasonable data we can use that our resources and this wonderful presentation that we presented is wholeheartedly grounded, where we are, we are getting that information from parents who are experiencing this, siblings, you know, caregivers, anybody, because I appreciate the data that we collected from referrals and that. But I also want to see how our efforts are working for their outside of school buildings and how the parents are getting support and how the caregivers are getting support because, you know, mental health affects everyone, right? So I want to make sure that we're being well-rounded with our data collection.
It's really, as I was listening to you flush that out, I think you were, what's qualitative and the quantitative so important in this?
So one of the reasons we haven't done our universal screening yet is because last year's screener, we, you know, we were required, we found one, we did it, and we're looking for something better. But we do want to get input from parents, from the community members, from teachers and from students themselves. So absolutely.
Can I ask one more question? I kind of want to stop talking. So I just want to go back because I want to make sure I've heard all it. So you said that you have like mental health surveys, and you're having the children fill them out more than a teacher? What a trend for that.
Last year, teachers did the mental health surveys. It was something, you know, after six or eight weeks, we had teachers fill them out in. And teachers who were online really, they felt, you know, like it was hard for them to identify that. So we've actually, you know, my staff and the team said, you know, we really can't, students, the older students, fill them out themselves. So we're looking at maybe fifth grade, maybe fourth grade filling out their own in addition to teachers.
Okay.
So we get input from both.
Thank you for adding that last segment.
Oh, yes. No, of course, a little uncoordinated for them unless, unless we find a really appropriate one for them next, but it's really difficult. So and then again, we are looking for one because we do, this is a small community, and one of the things that, I'm also on B2A, so, you know, we work, they keep referring back to our mental health page that we have, and that keeps getting updated. I didn't say that, but we continue to do that. It's a wonderful page, and when I get anything, I send it to Caitlin Channell, she's a, she's a great person, and she adds it to the mental health page. And we update and change things all the time. So that's a resource that hopefully people are using and accessing.
So is there like a pre-screening process to this too, a questionnaire for the kids? I mean, in recent years, I'm not saying the past five years, when I take my kids through the pediatrician, there is like a pre-screening for depression or anxiety that they do with the kids as young as, I'm not saying it started at 11, and my kids fill it out. So I didn't know if that was something, do we do that?
So this is more of a universal screening for everybody because that's what the state requirements to do. So everyone needs to take it to see how they're doing in lots of different areas. You know, say, are you feeling good, does it wait? You know, it gets all the areas of health, okay, mental health, so.
Well, yeah, I was just going to comment on the academic side of it. Diane is the queen of the academic side of it. But another thing we're thinking about this year, sometimes throughout MTSF process, students are brought up to academic by teacher observation or pattern C, maybe in a grade book. And so one of the things we've partnered with Oakland Schools, launching a new report through Lumine, which is a tool that is provided to all districts across the county. And we're calling it our early warning report, where it pulls in multiple data points for us. It could be attendance, it could be behavior referrals, it could be GPA, it could be number of credits earned, it could be NWEA scores. It depends on the level of students, so it's a pretty complex report. But the purpose and intent behind it is so that we can, our MTSF coordinators can take a look at that report and say, have we missed anybody? Because sometimes you have that compliant student that comes to school, always turns out homework in and doesn't cause a problem, but yet all of a sudden, something has happened academically that looks different. This report actually flashes out as bright green, and says, this is a student we need to go on, and we need to go on well. And so we're super excited about that report. We're getting ready to launch that with our MTSF coordinators later this week, and we'll be presenting it to all staff on our November 2 professional development. So we've got the mental health side of things, and then we've also got the academic side of things, pulling in multiple data points from multiple systems. So some are MYSTAR, some are NWEA, some are College Board, some are IRIPs at the elementary level.
ERA.
ERA. So it's complex with the changes by grade level, but we feel as though between the two systems, having a universal screen of mental health support and then looking at a variety of academic, of ways we can notice academic concerns, bringing those to the table, that we will have a very comprehensive way of looking at all of our students across the district to make sure not that many are leaving anything behind.
Do you feel, this sounds like great for the, in the classroom, do you think that this is helping out or identifying things for those that are virtual? Or is that more of a challenge?
It's more of a challenge, but it certainly is because our, the presentations that we're doing, classroom presentations are also going to classrooms online. Absolutely. So they're scheduling, you know, we have people who are, if I do our student presentations in the classroom, they're going into the online classroom and talking with them about things. And again, teachers may be thrilled all the time, like some fellow hasn't been online, you go check that, and dating students all the time. And so then our mental health folks make phone calls and make Zoom meetings and call parents and definitely everything, yes. And, you know, only 100, 140 or so kids, it's certainly a lot easier now, and teachers are more attuned to it because it's not new anymore.
Just wanted to, just I have one more question. Does anybody else have a question for? Realizing that the team is there for the family, the focus, of course, is the child and the children. Is there a resource that's affordable that you know of that can help refer parents to seek counsel themselves if they would be amenable to that and it's helpful to them if they want that assistance to try and help with what's going on with the team and with their child?
So we have a list of, you know, agencies that we refer people to, and depending on
Would be affordable?
Depending on, they're insurance or they're not insurance, or whatever they have, should we have different places that we will refer them to. Okay, I'm going to opt into where they're comfortable, but there should be a list. And we don't, you know which ones can help with certain areas, and then they go to the role, and they try that place, try this place. And if they call and say, we couldn't do it, they didn't have any appointments, try this place.
Right.
And if a family's having difficulty in doing that, you know, we have, you know, social workers that will help them, ask the right questions, and sit there with parents and help them actually make adjustments.
Sure, very good.
It's a system that I can navigate, and some people have said before.
Right, it can be difficult in a million times, recently especially, but I've heard that it's difficult if you can give a performance, it's a challenge from several sources, but I've heard, so, yes.
We, you know, we have lots of different options to go.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Do we have any other items? Next, we have our items for finance report. Tonight, we have Paul Bryant and Chris Kasab from Plant Maria. They will be presenting the results of our financial audit. Paul and Chris, hello.
Hello. Good morning, everybody.
We can hear you, we can hear you really well.
Thank you so much for having us. As Jan mentioned, I'm Paul Bryant of the audit department for the current year. Also on screen with me is Chris Kasab. And we're so happy to be here, and what we will do is walk through the financial information for you for the year ending June 30, 2021. We have some graphs that we will walk through with you, and as always, please feel free to ask us any questions. We're more than happy to answer those questions as we walk through. Before we get started, the one thing I wanted to make sure I said, well, first of all, thank you to Jan and the entire accounting department for getting all of this information available for us. And then as well as that, issuing the report this year, when it's finalized and submitted to the state, happy to inform you, it will be an unmodified opinion, which is what we consider our highest level of opinion that we can issue to an organization. consider our highest level of opinion that we can issue to an organization. It means all of your financial information as presented was accurate. There were no changes for us as far as what we had to disclose and make significant item changes to the financial information, which hopefully gives you a lot of confidence that the information you're receiving on a monthly basis in making decisions is accurate that's being given to you from the finance department. So again, thank you to Jan as well as our entire team. And I'm going to turn it over to Chris here as we walk through these slides.
Thanks, Paul. Hopefully everybody can see what we're sharing on screen here. You should see a slide of summary of audit results. So we are going to focus our presentation today on the general fund, which is the primary operating fund of the school district. The district does have several, does have several other funds, just to make you aware of, there's a food service fund, bond funds, capital projects funds, and a student activities fund in addition to a few others. But those are, those are the other ones that the district used, different pots of money for different reasons. But as you know, the general fund is the primary operating fund. So for the purpose of this presentation, that's where we're going to focus today. So this first slide captures the general fund revenue and it's broken up into four different categories and it compares the fiscal year '21 revenue compared to the fiscal year 2020 revenue. So I'll start at the top, federal funding this year, which is a hot topic with all of K-12, given a lot of the emergency grant funding and COVID-related funding that's come net. We'll talk a little bit about that in the next couple of slides, but you'll see here the district received about $1.9 million of federal funding this year, which is about $900,000 from last year. And that increase is mainly due to some of the COVID-related funding, namely coronavirus relief funds and a little bit of ESSER money, which I'm sure you guys have heard of at various board meetings. The next group here is local revenue, but that came in at about $3 million, consistent with the total amount received in the prior year, and that's mainly property tax revenues. The third bucket is state revenue at $19.7 million, which is up about $700,000 from last year. This includes primarily the foundation allowance, which is the per pupil amount that the district receives, in addition to some other categorical state-funded programs. And the primary reason for the increase this year is an increase to the foundation allowance, which we'll talk a little bit about in the next couple of slides. But also there was a little bit of ESSER money that came through the state as well. That was about $160,000. Finally, inter-district sources. The main component of revenue here is P A 18 money, which is money that's collected from Oak Intermediate School District. So in total, you can see total general fund revenue of $26 million this year, up about $1.5 million from the prior year. So next we'll focus on the expenditures in the general fund. So the largest group of expenditures is instruction-related expenditures. This is mainly teacher salaries, wages, benefits. It also includes the cost of substitute teachers and various purchase services and other costs that benefit the classroom. Next, our support services. This is things like counselors, administration, salaries and wages, support staff, maintenance staff. This includes some of the contracted services for transportation, really anything that supports classroom operations. Athletics and community services, that's pretty self-explanatory. Finally, the last line item there, you'll see debt service, capital outlay and payments to other school districts. That was about $1.6 million this year. You'll see that was up about $800,000 from last year. And really the reason for that increase is additional capital outlay spending as well as some additional principal and interest payments that were made this year related to the energy bond and the installment purchase agreement. So in total, you'll see total general fund expenditures this year of $25.7 million compared to last year of $24 million, an increase in expenses of about $1.7 million. This slide here looks at the final amended budget compared to actual results for fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. And so this is the budget that was adopted in June of 2021. So the expected change in fund balance was about $71,000. Actual results came in with no change in fund balance and that's primarily because the district transfers excess general fund dollars to some debt service funds to pay ments of some debt obligations, namely the installment purchase agreement and the energy bond. So the top line there, revenue, that came in just under budget by about $400,000 and expenditures came in less than expected by about $600,000.
And so before we move on from this, I wanted to, want to pat the board as well as the district on your budget. Think of this where your home right now. So your final budget that was approved in June, you were expected to add to your fund balance of 71, by $71,000. You basically broke even with all the different things that are going on in the school districts, not just yours, but in general. Look how well you budgeted for the current year. You broke even is what you did and you were able to put dollars, your excess, away to make future debt payments, which is great planning from a strategic perspective. But again, to pat yourself on the back regarding your overall budgeting ability for the district.
This slide here is, has been a hot topic with all districts and it really captures the non-recurring COVID-19 related relief funding that nearly every K-12 district in the state of Michigan has received. And so we'll talk through a couple of these different COVID grants. The biggest one the district has received is the coronavirus relief fund. So the district has been allocated a total of $1.2 million, of which about $875,000 of that has been spent to date. The district's also been awarded different ESSER-related grants. These are the emergency relief grants that came through with the federal legislation that was passed. And so ESSER I came in at about $218,000. All of those dollars have been spent already. The, the big influxes that are yet to come, which will come in fiscal year '22 and fiscal '23 are ESSER II and III. So as you can see on screen here, ESSER II, the district's allocation is $862,000, of which none of those funds have been spent yet as it now, are now being received. And you'll notice along the left, there's also a finite period of time in which these funds can be spent. So you'll see for ESSER II, of the $862,000, that needs to be spent by September 30 of And then ESSER III, which is the largest allocation to come, which is nearly $2 million of additional funding, that, those funds must be spent by September 30 of 2023. So in total, just to kind of recap, total federal awards, and again, this is one-time funding that the district will receive, is going to total over all these grants, $4.2 million. About a million dollars has been spent to date, which leaves 3.2 left to spend over the next couple of years. And I think it's just important to reiterate that, again, this is one-time funding, so it's important to keep in mind that these are not recurring fund, though as the district continues to budget for operations going forward. While this is a huge one-time increase and a lot of districts using these funds wisely, it's important to just note that after fiscal year '23, these funds fall off and will not recur.
And Chris made a great point as he was walking through. We're showing you the dollars, but just as important along the side are the spending dates. Part of the issue with the grants, as we all are aware, significant dollars have been pushed out, but then after the fact, they've given you the approval of what you can and cannot spend these dollars on, kind of as you're going, and the timelines have changed and been moved out. So very important not only to look at the dollars that are available, but the timelines in which you have the availability to spend those in regarding things that are here.
Okay. The next slide just is a nice way to look at some of the different spending categories within the general fund. And so we've always presented this slide, but it looks at what's the percentage of instructional expenditures to that of the total expenditures within the district. So you'll see over the past several years, the district has been pretty consistently spending about 56 cents of every dollar towards instruction. Those are costs that really benefit the classroom. You'll notice a slight decrease this year and I think that's primarily related to some of the non-instruction-related expenses like capital outlay. Some of this COVID-related funding was used to purchase personal protective equipment, cleaners, air purifiers. And so that sort of increased some of the non-instruction-related expenditures to skew this percentage down slightly, but still about half of every general fund dollar is in some way benefiting the classroom.
Very much so. So again, really want to highlight that although there is a decrease in the percentage, this does not mean you've slighted any of the classrooms or the students or anything like that. It's just based upon how the calculation is found, as Chris mentioned, for your non-instruction related items. But if you remember in the previous slide, there are quite a few dollars there available for classroom spending in the future. And also if you were to look at the financial statements, you would also see a pretty large deferred revenue line item, which means the expenses haven't been incurred yet. And when they do, we're expecting this to continue to go up just mathematically. But everything that you've allocated to be spent in the classroom has been, definitely been there.
This slide here presents the general fund banks, which is the number that most people care about with, with all our school districts. So you'll see here, this shows a trend of the general fund balance over the past several years. And you'll notice for the last four years, this has really remained unchanged. So the fund balance has been just over $4 million. So this year, the total fund balance was $4.12 million. And again, that's as the district has any excess fund balance or surplus in a given year, those are moved to debt funds to help with some of those future debt payments. And you'll see here, two different shading. So the shading represents assigned or non-assigned fund balance. So the district has adopted a policy behind $2 million of general fund, sure, capital projects needs. So that represents the blue bar there. Any excess over that $2 million, which in this year is about $2.1 million, is considered unassigned fund balance, which can really be used at the discretion of the district. And just to kind of lay out some other statistics here, the unassigned fund balance as a percentage of expenditures is about 8%. And this, if you kind of look at it from a day's perspective, if you were to figure how, how long would this fund balance last, the district over a 365-day year? If you didn't receive any new dollars, that fund balance will last you about 29 days. Over 180-day school year, that fund balance will last you about 14 days. This next slide presents the trend in enrollment count over the past several years. I know there was a change in how the state did their pupil count last year, which kind of skewed things down for really a lot of districts. There was a, due to COVID, they changed the way how they blended the two annual accounts. But this year, the blended count was 2,275 students, which is down slightly from fiscal year '20. And just to kind of put this in perspective, if you, if you take the decrease in the foundation allowance over the past year, 918 students, that equates to about a $7.4 million decrease in revenue just based on that foundation allowance.
So think back to our original slide where we talked about your budget and how well you've been budgeting over the years. You've taken a $7.4 billion basically decrease in revenue over the last, since 2012, but you've still been able to make solid decisions, tough decisions, but still strategic tough decisions on behalf of the district to keep a balanced budget, to be able to still provide programming. And you see that affecting that revenue, what that would have had is you had not, you know, thought ahead and strategic in your decision-making. You still absorbed a $7.4 million revenue drop, which is substantially huge.
So the foundation allowance this year for fiscal year '21 did increase. It was $8,111 per student, which is up from $7,936 in the prior year. So just to kind of put, put it in perspective, over the last several years, there's been a $1,145 increase in the per pupil allowance over those years, which is a 16% increase. But one topic that's come up quite a bit at various board meetings is, yes, this foundation allowance has increased, but if you were to layer in the impact of inflation, this, this increase in the foundation allowance is not kept up with inflationary increases. And as we all know, inflation has skyrocketed over the last year and this jump from prior year certainly doesn't keep pace with that. So I think it's important to know that, that your costs have gone up significantly due to inflation. However, the foundation allowance, although it looks like it has increased, has not quite That's really all we had for you today. We're welcome any questions you guys have and if not, we appreciate the opportunity to present you all today.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your support, your input, your full explanations each year. It's a pleasure and we appreciate working with you.
Thank you for having us. As I said again, very happy to work with this board and Jan and the accounting department as well. You've made some tough decisions, but you can see you're still moving along in a positive direction, doing what you can during these circumstances. Hopefully with a increase in your foundation allowance, as well as some of the coronavirus relief funds that are available to you, you'll still be able to enhance some of the programming that you're looking at. I heard the presentation regarding the mental health overall, some of those different type of areas that continue benefiting the student overall.
Thank you. I, thank you, Jan, for, and your team, for everything that you do with spear cutting each and every year, this huge effort that leads to this momentous report that we always want to hear from. So thank you for everything that you do.
I just want to also just real quick compliment, because when you mentioned that it has been tough decisions, and I, I go back to the 2012 time period and they have not been easy. And, and I get always nervous when I talk, talks about the audit, but you guys, I don't want to say the word, you made it enjoyable or at least palatable. So, because I think the two of you have been pretty much with us for the longest time.
Yes.
And I appreciate for the public, the way you explain it. I think it's been very, I thought, easy to understand and appreciate that. And then again, my, my kudos to Jan, by far. The woman, I'm not sure where she finds this stuff, but she sure got some magic hat that she's pulling out, grants or whatever. So, but thank you.
All right. Anything else on that topic? All right. Now we, thank you again, gentlemen. We really appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is we get to continue on with Jan with the E-rate.
Hi. Switch gears here. I'm passing around the spreadsheet. More good news in terms of some federal funding. I think everybody is familiar with our E-rate program. We do, over the last several years, we've got various months of E-rate to help with technology infrastructure. This that I'm passing around now is a new grant that we were just awarded and it's called the A R P connectivity grant. I shouldn't put the title on there. And A R P is American Relief Plan. So this is part of the most recent where ESSER falls under the funding, the same, ESSER III falls under this A R P funding. Long story short, we are able to purchase devices. There's two windows I highlighted on the left. We have been approved for the first window. We're trying to make a modification to the first window. And I have a little, some notes here. The way this works is we purchase the devices. We are asking for your approval now to start the purchase. We are asking for your approval now to start the purchase process for window, for the first window, which would consist of 258 laptops. The laptops are for all of our teachers and staff, and that will be sorely needed. It's been many years since we've been able to upgrade or refresh all of the teacher laptops. Teacher laptops are a little, this grant pays 100%. Any item purchased $400 or less, it's 100% reimbursed. Any item over $400, we pay the difference. So the laptops, if we follow that all the way across, our brand versus Brandon pays, our out-of-pocket would be $48,982.50. We need to purchase some USB hubs to go on with the laptops. That, again, is our responsibility. The Chromebooks, we believe we're going to, currently were approved for 600. We're 99% sure that's going to go to 850. We will change these numbers a little bit to what may more sense for us. Those will be 100% reimbursed, so zero out-of-pocket, and then some hotspots we're responsible for. So in total, we're going to be receiving a value of about $375,000 worth of devices in the first window, and our out-of-pocket expenditure will be about $60,000. So tonight, we're asking for approval to go ahead with that and to, for our $60,000, our part of this grant. And then, real quick, the second window we've applied for, we have a good chance of getting, we're going to wait and see, obviously, we don't know, but that would give us 800 more Chromebooks, 600 iPads, our preschool through second grade students, these iPads, and then some cases. And as talking to Thomas to this, these are K8 devices of generation eight, I guess, of how the Chromebooks. We have a lot of Generation four, five, six, and seven in the district. So assuming we get both windows, or the second window, we already have the first window, our students, well, every student in our district will have the latest version of the Chromebook, which is a really, really nice thing. We'll be right where we need to be with technology. Any questions, Thomas? Thomas is ready to place a purchase order once we get approval.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
What do we do about ongoing maintenance for these devices and cycling? Should we need to cycle through them, like the devices? Where does that cost fly?
Well, the maintenance come, we have three technicians plus a director of technology. We handle all of the maintenance of devices at house, so they take care of that.
So when we purchase these, we're not purchasing any kind of maintenance to bring up with them, nothing? It's not like a lease? We own them?
We own them.
We maintain them?
Yes, we own them, we maintain them. We bring up something I talked to Thomas about today was the disposal, because we're going to replace all of these. And we, Carl, Dr. Hydrick, and myself, and Thomas, there's several options we can do with disposal. We could sell them super cheap, $10, with the idea, we're not going to service them, but take it as is. We could donate them. So the disposal one, we need to discuss, but the maintenance set is our team. And we have added a technician in the last couple of years due to the increase of using the devices. So we do have an extra body in that department.
What is the timing for, if you stop this, I apologize if you just didn't hear, what's the timing for the second window on the whiteboard?
They haven't given us a timing, but all of this grant, the ARP Connectivity Grant, everything has to be purchased by June 30th of next year. So we should hear the second window in the next couple of months. The idea is they want us to purchase these ASAPs overused immediately. They don't want us, there is no carryover of these funds. It's this year, and purchase it, we were told directly from the person who helps us with this, to purchase them as soon as possible, so the students can, maybe. Second window, I, you know, it's the government, we don't, but we hope within, this first window was approved just recently, and we think the second one will be by Christmas.
I understand, because you seem to have a nice acknowledgement of readily applying, quickly applying, getting feedback quickly. And so again, thank you for being all over that.
Well, thank you. I do love the grant, I have to give it to Mr. Thomas, he works with, you know, the nuts and bolts of making sure that, because he's first tech guy, making sure. We're going to use Enacom for the purchase, and as the vendor, we will be using. RMC is the state-led for technology, so everything's already been bid off from RMC, and the vendor who won the issue is Enacom, so that's where we'll be purchasing all these devices from.
These are brand new, right? Are they currently?
These are brand new. So that sets us up for a little while in terms of the latest technology for a while, the devices, yeah?
Any other questions on the topic of the E-Rate report? Is there anyone else, Jan?
No.
Any questions? Okay, thank you again. And then, under, last ever, the finance report, at least, I think, is the RFP for the diving board.
Yes. Chris Dynas has asked Mark to look into, and our one diving board, really bad shape. Well, you know, two of them need to be replaced. When the quote came in, it was $35,000, so I said to Chris and Mark, well, we're going to time out, this is the ball goes hit, let's stake on bid limit at $25,000. So we need to bid it out, first of all, and typically, when we're going to bid anything out, we come to the board and get approval to do an RFP. So that's what this is for tonight. We will do the RFP, I'll do the RFP, get it out on the street, and invite, I don't know how many vendors do this type of work, but at least our auditors will be happy that we did an RFP, and we met that requirement, which we agreed to do on $25,000.
So is it the case that one diving board is not usable?
Right, right. It's a yellow chain. I asked Mark if it's a yellow chain, but I don't, right, or exactly, it's, yeah.
Is it one of the lower ones, or high? Don't we have one high, one too low, or?
Yeah, I'm not sure which one it is, but one is not usable.
Right, right. So this one was kind of a long time coming. We've been putting this one, this purchase off for a while, and we, we could, it's general fund for this, or we have our, there were capital projects that, I don't know, or whatever. Chris has, he's been patient on this one, and it is, obviously, we want to, this one needs, there's things we want to do that we're unable to do because we don't have enough boards. That's why I'm telling you.
So the RFP will go for repairing all necessary?
It will go for, it's a brand new, yeah, like unbolt and rebolt and the whole thing. So, yeah, they'll get that out as soon as possible, by the end of the week if this is approved.
We had a state diver last year, too. We had a private diver last year. So, it'll be bad.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's all I have on the diving.
That's all you have?
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you for everything again, Jan.
You're welcome.
Much appreciated. All right. Now we're going to move on to action items. And our first is the approval of the 2021 School District Audit Motion.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the 2020, 2021 School District Audit Results as presented.
Second. Any discussion? None, we have a local vote.
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines, yes. Diane Selter?
Yes.
Hillary Smith Colaga, yes. Hillary Stokowski, yes. Jeff Zelke?
Yes.
Liz Caluna?
Yes. Motion passes, thank you. Next, I just want to explain quickly for anybody to, for seeks understanding that the next item up is approval of the Brandon Education Association contract, and in light of conflict of interest, the law doesn't allow for certain board members who may have a conflict of interest to vote on this matter. So in this instance, Jeff will be refusing himself, and he knows that's the case, and I just wanted to mention it, so nobody wonders what's wrong. So may I have a motion?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the BPA contract as presented.
Support. Is there any discussion on this matter? None, they have a local vote.
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines, yes. Diane Selter?
Yes.
Hillary Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Liz Caluna?
Yes. Motion passes, thank you. Our next item is the approval of the technology purchases that were just reviewed. May I have a motion?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the technology purchase of 600 Chromebooks and 250 iPads with E-Rate funds as presented.
Support. Any discussion? Local vote, please.
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Diane Selter?
Yes.
Hillary Smith Colaga, yes. Hillary Stokowski, yes. Jeff Zelke?
Yes.
Liz Caluna?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next item is the approval to issue an RFP for the diving boards we just discussed. May I have a motion?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve to issue an RFP for diving boards as presented.
Support. Any discussion? Local vote, please.
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines, yes. Diane Selter?
Yes.
Hillary Smith Colaga, yes. Hillary Stokowski, yes. Jeff Zelke?
Yes.
Liz Caluna?
Yes.
Motion passes. And our next item is the approval of the Human Resource Report. May I have a motion?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the Human Resource Report as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? None, local vote, please.
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines, yes. Diane Selter?
Yes.
Hillary Smith Colaga, yes. Hillary Stokowski, yes. Jeff Zelke?
Yes.
Liz Caluna?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. Now we have our opportunity for citizens' input. Maria, will you check? I put the list back up there in case anybody else wanted to sign up, and then we'll look and see if anybody has their hands raised, please. Do you not have any hand for us? Okay, thank you very much, Maria. All right, so we have three individuals who have signed up to speak to the board. The first is Mr. Warren, and again, we ask for your approach. You provide your address, and you let us know your parent or community, a member of the community, so, and we have three minutes.
We're very warm, and it is different for about a month. A lot of stuff been going on. I just wanted to bring up the mental health thing that y'all are talking about. I was unaware of this, and I'm a very active parent. Y'all know that situations was going on with my kids, with my child. Maybe that will help him, get the help he needs, that his parents talk to about mental health services. As I say, they talk a good game, but they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. Oh, we have resources that we can give the parent. No. I was told, you need to admit your child is coming around for the rest of the seventh year. Not, oh, we'll give you some resources so you can get the help you need, and if you can't get it, we'll help you. Then when I say I'm not sending my son there, see if this gets resolved, this has got to stop, for real. This has been going on over three, four years now. I'm a parent just like the rest of y'all. My kids are kids, just like the rest of y'all are kids, and I'm just coming in as a concerned parent, that's all. October, October 11th. Well, well, October 11th. Yeah, oh, October 12th. I get behavioral reports from my son every day because I'm a part of the IEP team for him, which took me three years to get him on IEP. He had a good day. Then I get a phone call that my son said me anywhere. My son came home and said, Dad, a child phone called me anywhere twice. I got witnesses. They're being harassed, you know, to keep them from coming out talking. And is this going to be anti-boombing, or this and that? I don't, I don't know. And I'm trying to stay calm as I can about this situation, because I done made three police reports already. My, two of my kids have been racially profiled, and I just want it to stop. I'm not saying press charges, just, just have it stop. And I told you, I took my daughter out of this, but she's doing good. I'll try to look at it. And the mental health, like I said, I told them from day one, my child was born with a situation that he cannot help, but I'm not here to, to take up for him. I'm here to help him, I'm not going to use it as a pressure. I'm going to discipline him, give him the needs to praise who is doing good, but I can't do my part of a parent. Yep. Stories are being changed. My son came to me and said that. When he was called back, he went straight to the teacher. He did the right thing. And the other time, he was put out. He went to the teacher, she went on to another teacher, the teacher said, took over the students, and then told my son to walk away, got the information from another student. The other student lied on my son and said, DJ said that. So DJ come back, well, DJ, he said, you said it, if you say it again, you're going to get in trouble. How you going to sit there? And, and, and my son went and did the right thing. He's told me numerous times, Dad, I don't like going to the teachers because they don't do it right. And I believe it, because I am being told false information, and I got back to me after that, you know? Like I read on the board here before, if it wasn't written down, it never happened. That's why I got back to this.
Thank you very much for your comments.
But it's got to stop.
Thank you, sir.
See, I feel like nobody's going to listen, but they can't keep getting on my kids. Y'all see, my kid's out here the whole night, then say work, because they're very well mannered.
Thank you, sir.
But if it wasn't, man, it's not y'all kid. That's why I know by this, thank you, sir, and, and I don't like being like this, but I just want it to stop. It has to be addressed, that situation, because the news is going to be involved. I'm going above and beyond of them four kids right here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have, I apologize for not to let you know, Angie Indish.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Lady Angie Indish, I have two children at Harley-Fonson, I'm a great, I want to bring up MACS again, I know it's like the end of that first, we talked about it so many times, but with the October 1st budget, look for that. Thank you for everything that you guys have been doing, and I do appreciate it, and I do appreciate that you take the time to work on the product, and I know that there's, not only myself, but numerous people have reached out through email and phone calls, and many people have told me that they're getting phone calls back, and we've sounded to email and all of it. So it is appreciated, and I personally appreciate you taking the time to do that. But I wanted to bring up when the actual reference budget, when it was passed through by Governor Whitmer, that specifically states in that budget about the MACS mandates no longer being, that the county commissioners can no longer enact those things in, within the counties. Eleven other counties have publicly stated that they're kicking away those MACS mandates, and that they'll no, they'll no longer enforce those or enact those at all. I believe there's four counties, including ours, that have not made a public statement. Now, to my knowledge, a law, as this was written into the budget, would more than supersede the mandate that's being enacted. So I don't, I guess I don't understand why it's still being enacted unless they don't actually need to specifically say that there is something that, because the law supersedes it. I understand that it's not easy to be in your position of making these tough decisions. And I want to recognize that last year, the year before the 2021 school year, you guys were in a horrible position, trying to decide whether we were going to be in-person or going to be virtual. And from what I can tell, I believe that all of the school districts, and I think there are only three school districts in the entire county, that that chose to be in-person full time and offer the action. And that was not an easy decision for you guys to make. And then in November, again, when we had to make the decision because we had high numbers at Hardeston, the easy decision would have been to close all of the schools. And that was brought up and that's put before the board. And you still made the difficult decision to just pause that school and allow our other schools to remain open and in-person. And we did a fabulous job, phenomenal, keeping our kids in-person in school. And just asking that we look at making that hard decision again and not going with what our county, regardless of what the county commissioners are saying, and we get what that October 1st budget says. And again, it specifically states under Section 250 that county commissioners cannot enact a countywide MAFS mandate for our kids, and that it falls back to the school or it falls back to the district.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your input. Okay, our final speaker is Candace.
Hello, Candace Powell, wonder if that's you. First time here. I've wanted to come and just hadn't stayed it out. Last year, we kept our kids home virtually, basically because I did not want them to have a next holiday at school. And I know, like she said, you guys have probably talked about me at every single meeting I have not been here. But I'm just for choice. And I'm hoping that when you get back to that point, I know you said that you were consulting legal teams, that you guys will go back to your original decision of giving everyone the choice. My children are in-person this year, and it made it easy to choose that, knowing that we would have the choice. And then when that was taken away, I offered my children to, you know, what do you want to do? Do you want to go? You can do school at home, it's not a problem, it works well. They want to be there, they wanted to see their friends, so we're here, that's a school, wearing. So anyhow, I just wanted you to know that here another voice that I'm in favor of choice. Or you could do, to a vocal, I didn't want it in middle school. And that's it.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
And I'll say one quick thing about the MAFS situation. And as a health issue for my son, he's getting in trouble because he has problems and his MAFS, and when he gets hot, like he's been out of here a couple of times because of his health. And he's getting in trouble on the bus for lowering his MAFS. He's getting in trouble in school for lowering his MAFS because it's getting pretty hot. And he ends up blowing it up, I was just talking to the superintendent. He gets headaches, and his head starts hurting, eyes, and his stomach, and he gets sick. He can't keep getting in trouble, and there is something seriously wrong with him. And he's asking for help, screaming for help, and he gets in trouble. And I got documents, and I got it, and I got more than just two.
Thank you.
So that they have to work together and help him. They need to help, keep doing this.
Thank you, sir. Maria, would you mind checking to see if there are any other hands raised during what came up during the conference?
Jan, Robert, you can answer it?
Thank you.
No, not hand.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, our next agenda item is to have a motion to move into closed session for negotiations of the view of attorney-client privilege matters. Any have a motion, please?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approved to enter a closed session for the litigation and attorney-client privilege matters.
Second. Any discussion? We have a roll call, please.
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Diane Selter?
Yes.
Hillary Smith Colada?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Zelke?
Yes.
Liz Caluna?
Yes.
All right, we will now move into closed session, please.